All right, let's call it order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you everybody for coming to this very unusual meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We are doing just Department Directors, Head Directors only, so we're just going to go at that level today.
And the media.
And media, of course, yes. So, we don't want to kick Alex out. So, but I do want to remind you everybody that this is a meeting, it's being recorded by video and audio, and so please, if you've got anything to say, come to microphone, introduce yourself as usual.
Wipe it down?
Yeah. So, okay, I don't think we have any awards or recognitions.
No.
Okay, acknowledgements of previous minutes, do we have any?
No.
No? Additions to the agenda?
There are two items that were added. They are on the overhead, and then you have copies of them before you. It's the last two items dealing with an emergency and office closure.
Okay.
Did the one from Tom Fellows make it to the agenda, the airport road? Did he talk to you about this?
No, he talked about something, I wasn't sure.
And judge from your reaction, I would assume that that did not make it to the agenda.
Oh, yes, I do now have an order.
Okay, that's fine, we can...
We can do a report, though, on it and officially adopt it.
Okay, all right. So, the first thing we're going to do is we're going to go into a public hearing mode for the East Yumitilla Fire District. Let's go into that real quick, and I'm going to go ahead and make a phone call, or actually, you want to try that number there for Dave Beatty?
Nine?
Yeah.
I wonder if you first have to turn it on?
That's it.
Move to our action items.
All right. While we're waiting for...
He's in there all here.
While we're waiting for Dave, we're going to move to the actionable items. Actually, hold off on that, don't call me yet. We'll do that first.
Mr. Chair, I propose we move to the major items.
The number you have dialed has not been recognized. Please try again.
Is there just a off button on that, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, we're going to just skip down to number 10 on the agenda, which is the emergency. Okay, so, due to the continuing medical and... Just unplug that bad boy if you have to. Due to the continuing medical and economic situation resulting from COVID-19 virus, it is recommended that the Board of Commissioners declare an emergency within Yumitilla County. This declaration will allow for easier access to services and flexibility in dealing with the situation. And we discussed that, and Commissioner Murdock, I think you framed that quite nicely earlier. Did you want to kind of say what you said earlier?
I think going back to the fact that, while we have been reluctant to go beyond a state of alert, I think we've come to a point where we feel that in order to deal, address all possible resources available to us, both for the medical crisis and the economic crisis, that in the interest of both the operation of the county and the citizens of the county, it would behoove us to declare a state of emergency so that all possible resources are available to the county. And so with that in mind, I would move for adoption of Order BCC 2020-020.
I would second that.
Okay, you've got a motion to second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And motion carries.
One of the good things this does is also opens up the availability of additional resources and services that could be available to us that would not be there without the declaration of emergency.
And I'm going to...
Not that we think it's any more or less of an emergency than it's been.
So, Commissioner Murdock, as the Chair or the liaison of the Public Health Department, we discussed office closures, and I'm going to have you frame this one as well.
That position is available to either of you, too.
No, 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 you're doing quite well with this.
If you would like to assume it. The reason that we have brought you all in here today, yesterday I received a call from Rob Corbett, Pendleton City Manager, advising me that the city was going to close all buildings and be available by appointment only. We discussed this this morning, and we are going to propose that the county follow suit and close all of our buildings. They will be open by appointment only, so Stafford-Hansel would be closed entirely. Our other offices would fundamentally be closed, however, part of our, we haven't gotten all the details written down, but one of the things we're going to do, obviously, is permit some latitude with our departments in order to adopt what you perceive to be... We need, we want to, we don't want to come up with procedures relative to personnel, like you can do this, or you can do that, that might come into conflict with our contract, but you can adopt procedures within your department on how best to serve your clients. This is a client-focused decision. I think most of you are already doing that in one way or another, where you are not bringing people into your offices, but, and making home visits, that you are doing those kind of things, and that would continue to be the case. In the case of the Health Department, they're still going to maintain clinics. They're by appointment only. We do not wish to deny medical services at this time in the courthouse. For other departments in the courthouse and otherwise, business would be by appointment only. This is the same practice and procedure that the city is adopting tomorrow. We would start it tomorrow, so it would be by appointment only. We have a little bit of an issue here in the courthouse because we, the agenda is not entirely ours on what we do here in the courthouse, and Roy Blaine is here with us. I'm trying to articulate what the courts are doing at this point, and while Stafford-Hansel is closed to judicial proceedings, this courthouse is not. So consequently, we are going to lock all of the doors in the building except the front door. The front door will remain open. In the courthouse, we will close both doors to the left, the door to the left and the door to the right in the hallway. If you're aware, those are fire doors, those will be closed, and clearly marked employee only. We are not sending the employees home, but there will not be traffic in the courthouse other than people who are coming by appointment only. This also is consistent with what the city is doing. That would be in effect for four weeks at this time. What details am I...
One of the things, for handicap accessibility, we've, I've directed our Facilities Department to install a buzzer, so they've ordered the parts for that. What the buzzer will do is it will allow somebody who needs to come in in a wheelchair, they can hit that buzzer, and we will send somebody to the door to let them in. All other people from the public will come in through the front doors.
The only staff member we have who falls inside that range that I indicated is our receptionist, and that position, that station will be closed, pardon me, that station will be closed, so.
You know, the, I read one of our colleagues from Coos County made the comment, "We would rather err on the side of closing the buildings and being, and erring on the side of public safety versus leaving it open and exposing people to a potential risk." So if we're going to be judged, we're going to be judged by maybe going more than what was required, so I think, I think we're safe on that.
And there's been general discussion that's gone on for quite a long time about general security of the building in general, and this just enables us to maybe have a little sampling of how that works. I think we're seeing the response of the public being very, very good to this crisis that we're facing right now, and the traffic of people moving around, I'm sure you've noticed, is significantly less, so I don't think it's going to have a significant impact on the general public. I think most people are staying at home as much as they can, trying to do as much business by phone as they can, and where that business has to be done, in person, it can be done by appointment, so that it should work very well for everyone.
Bottom line is, we're still open for business, just on a modified schedule. We're still doing the work of the people, so.
I would go back, however, to the point we indicated that this is both, we perceive this to be, feel very strongly, that this is both a medical crisis and an economic crisis. We are deeply sensitive to the fact that a number of people in this community are going to be dramatically impacted. We fear that there are businesses that will be closed that may never reopen. We know that there are thousands of employees who would love to still be getting a paycheck today that are not, and, and we're going to try to do everything within our power. One of the things you saw in my memo yesterday was that first and foremost, when we need to make purchases, please, please, whenever possible, do not make those purchases online. Make those purchases somewhere in Yumitilla County. And I realize that we have preached otherwise relative to the fact it might in cases cost a little more, but I think at this particular point in time, it behooves us to shop locally, shop at home whenever possible, and support our merchants.
Absolutely, they're, they're struggling, too. Jennifer?
Can I just add to that real quick?
Could you come up to the microphone, so...
Jennifer Blake, Human Resources. When we met with the Department Directors last Thursday, HR and Admin Services had gone around and gotten some initial supplies, whatever we could get ahold of to help departments do some of their own cleaning of surfaces, et cetera. I just wanted to put out there that we're just about out of those supplies, so departments will need to try to get ahold of any of those on their own moving forward. We do not have much more of that.
But we also don't plan to diminish our other special service of public areas that we're doing.
Correct.
So, Roy, did I, did I adequately cover access to the courts?
Yes, I can expand that a little bit if you like.
Do you want to come up? Sorry.
Roy Blaine, Trial Court Administrator. Thank you, Commissioner Murdock. I appreciate the invitation to be here today. And I want to thank all of you for being good partners in going through what we're going through, and apologize for maybe being a little late in getting our COVID-19 response out to all of you. Part of that is because of the complexity of the law in regards to people's rights, and the concerns for balancing those rights against, as Commissioner Schaefer said, the definitive need for general well-being that we're concerned with. Having said that, the Circuit Court is closing all functions in Hermiston, as Commissioner Murdock noted. We had planned to ramp that down tomorrow. If you're closing the building tomorrow, it'll be ramped down today. We are bringing staff to Pendleton to handle the Yumitilla County matters. Just coincidentally, we are continuing to staff the Hepner Courthouse and do Morrow County legally required matters, and that's principally criminal matters, and things like restraining orders, civil commitments that may come before the court and so forth have to be heard and will be heard. Where it comes to Pendleton, we will be reducing to two courtrooms most of the time. Courtroom three will probably be closing most days. Courtroom one will handle criminal matters. Courtroom three, courtroom two, I'm sorry, will handle the family law, civil, juvenile, those kinds of things. The other piece of it is, and I won't go into great details, but the Chief Justice has provided that any staff that do not come to work but are declared to be, and court employees in good standing, will be compensated. I have declared that all of my staff are essential employees and will be required to work on certain days. We will reduce the footprint in this building significantly, probably having just the civil counter open and all business be transacted there. Again, we're reducing the kinds of things that we'll be considering. Lawyers file things electronically anyway, so those will come in electronically. Things that have to be heard in court will be heard. Things that don't have to be heard in court will sadly be deferred to sometime in the future. One of the big ones on that is landlord-tenant issues. Will probably be deferred down the road. But importantly, the staff will be working some days, some days they will be working from home or on a miscellaneous protected leave. So that is where we're at. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Roy.
Thank you very much.
I believe we're taking somewhat the same, somewhat the same position relative to a belief that our employees, all of our employees are essential. We are, however, as you've noticed, taking steps to operate in a different manner in order to protect their health and safety. Anything else that we... Questions from Department Heads? We, of course, would need you to post, you'll need to post your offices. You don't need to necessarily post them in the courthouse, but, but post them, if you have a remote site, post that so that people are aware of what's happening.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I will move that we proceed with this action.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Before we eliminate discussion, please, if you have questions or concerns, our legal counsel is in the process of drawing up the intricacies of this order, and it would be extremely useful if you have questions or concerns that you would address those at this time so that, excuse me, so that he could incorporate those into his order and there not be questions. Been a bit of a problem lately with some of that happening statewide, and we certainly don't want it to happen locally, that if we're going to issue an order, it should be legal, official, and clear.
Dan?
Dan Lenai, Director of Administrative Services. There are a few questions because we're mandated, the recording office, to do certain things about recording and changing our procedures to accommodate that, marriage licenses, too. There's a few items there. We do the passports, too, so I need to, I just really want to sit down with Doug a little bit to go over those afterwards. I don't know if we need to bring them out here right now, but we do need to consider what our procedures are to implement this. That also allows us to go within the law, so.
I think that's prudent.
And most of that will be accomplished through appointments.
That's...
And they'll still be available. They'll just have to be making appointment.
We're not shutting it down to the public. They'll still have access, they'll just have to do it via appointment.
Right, understand that. Just, I just need to create some procedures, and I want to make sure our procedures are going to be within legal, you know, legal standing, that they're correct and work and function correctly. So I want, need a little help making sure our procedures work with what we're going to lay out here.
Good, thank you.
Bear in mind, this will be encompassing the motion. It'll be effective beginning tomorrow morning. Any other questions or concerns, issues that we might need to address that we would want clear? It does not preclude employees from leaving the courthouse to do their duties. That certainly will be something for you, Rachel, because I know that our appraisers are out doing appraisals. They are not having contact with anyone, but they are having, they are doing appraisals. Obviously, our sheriff's staff and others are out and about, too, so it does not, we're not confining our staff to the courthouse or any other building.
And I think, under Sheriff, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you guys already take steps at the jail for intakes?
We have for the last, at least, two weeks, and we're increasing our questionnaire criteria. It was limited to just a few questions, but we're going to ask more. We've also made some adjustments to our civil division, going to suspend new CHL application coming into the office for the next couple of weeks.
I would, I would take this opportunity to applaud the work and efforts of Joe and his staff, who have worked tirelessly. Knock on wood, at this moment, we are still proud to recognize that we have no known active cases of COVID-19 in the county at this time. And as Commissioner Schaefer indicated, if two months from now, people accuse us of overreacting because there hasn't been further cases, so be it. We'll, we'll subject ourselves to that criticism.
That would be positive criticism.
Yes, yes, it would.
And the other thing I just want to caution people is be careful of the rumor mill. There's a lot of rumors floating around about positive cases and everything else. The real authority is Public Health and Oregon Health Authority, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm getting a nod from Joe, so that's good. Social media is good for certain things, but for rumor, for verifying rumors, probably not your best source of information.
No, we're not using Facebook as a, as a source of data.
UcoHealth Facebook.
Except UcoHealth Facebook.
Ah, yes. Now's a good time for you to...
The UcoHealth Facebook site is reliable. Beyond that, I would find other sources for, for medical information.
Thank you for that. UcoPublicHealth Facebook page, okay. So, another thing I want to address, a little off-topic, is there is a racism issue that there seems to be that, and I think, I think Joe really framed it perfectly, the COVID-19 virus does not care who you are. It doesn't care what color your skin is, it doesn't matter what social class you belong to, it's, it's going to hit you, if it's going to hit you, it's going to hit you. Race has absolutely nothing to do with it. So, and I, I highly, I'm disappointed in the reports I've been hearing about the racism piece in this, because that's clearly not a factor in who gets it. So I'm a little disappointed in that.
You may hear, and yesterday, a formal document was signed by Yumitilla County, by the Confederate Tribes, and by John Turner, Mayor of the City of Pendleton, discussing very directly our deep concerns about discrimination and our vow to work together in the future to address that issue. That document has been signed and distributed.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any further discussion on, on the closures of offices throughout the county? Any questions for the Department Heads you may have thought of? Okay. Also, do bear in mind, you can always reach out to your liaison commissioner if you have questions down the road. We're always going to be available to you guys, so, okay. So we have a motion on the floor in a second. For all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
We could have a brief recess. We will keep them on leave.
Yeah, we can take a quick recess in case people want to vacate, so we can continue the rest of the agenda.
Would you like me to dial up here?
We actually would appreciate it if you would. No, nothing personal.
If Dan's here for the victim's witness, why don't we adjust that agenda, too?
Oh, yeah. Dan, are you here for the victim's witness?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to start yours first.
Oh. I've got him coming on the phone.
Oh, he can...
What? But he can, he can hang on the phone.
Message YA 22.
A minute.
The number you have called is no longer in service. If you feel you have reached this recording...
All right, you just hang that up, I'll call my cell phone when it's time. So this is...
Does it get it off?
It should. We'll, we'll find out in a minute.
Converge.
Are we ready for Dan? He's kind of...
Yeah.
The converge number, whatever that means.
Come on up, Dan. We're going to do position number six, position reclassification for the victim witness program.
Good morning, Dan Firmans, DA's office. This is specific to our Victims Assistance Program. It's written out, I guess specifically what we're trying to do is trying to reclassify the positions that we have currently in our Victims Assistance Program. We have two victim advocates, and they both are in a range 12. We're trying to reclassify them to a range 14. In essence, with the Office Assistance 3, they are working with our, which is a legal assistance, sorry, position. They are working with our prosecutors each and every day on a daily basis, working with our victims, and as well working on the files in the office. As you can see, this would basically be a two-step increase. It would be a $202 a month increase for each one of those positions, but I think at this point, moving them to a step 14 and in that Legal Secretary position is where they're at. It's really what the work that they're doing. Plus, they're grant-funded positions in which this is written within our grant. Currently, it says in here for July of 2020, I may be back in front of you sooner rather than later if I could take a look at the budget and get back to maybe moving this up to present date and have it apply sooner rather than later, because I believe it is within our budget, that grant budget. Any questions in that regard?
That was my concern, if it's funded by grant, then when grant funds run out, what happens at that point?
Yeah, and I think that's something that's fair, but I think that we have not seen that. I think we've seen the alternative. In fact, we've been able to increase. When I first started in this position, there was a director and a victim advocate. We now have a cultural-specific victim advocate in that position. We currently have a half-time advocate that is written within this grant. That actual half-time advocate, part-time is, I believe, leaving our office, but we've been able to increase, and so that is always a possibility when it comes to grants, but I think we've seen the, we've seen the, actually, the opposite.
Sure, I move to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Let me track on him.
I couldn't figure out the joy of having Marie here today.
Hello, Dave.
Hey, Dave, it's John Schaefer.
Hey, how are you, sir?
I'm good. So, we're going to go into public hearing mode now.
Okay.
And so I want, I've got you in the room on speaker.
Perfect.
So, the background on this, do you want me to do this, Doug, or do you want to do it?
Yeah, it might be easier if...
I can do it, but it's fine, but...
You want Dave to do it, or do you want me to do it?
We can do it. You can do it, Ken.
All right, I'll do it. So this is a potential formation of the East Yumitilla Fire and Rescue District is before the Board for a second and final public hearing. Previously, the Board initiated the process for the formation and held the first public hearing. The current hearing is to consider the formation and referral of the information to the voters. So, basically, this is going to include the, what's that?
I think it was background noise.
All right. So, it's going to combine the districts of the East Yumitilla County Fire District, Athena Fire Department, Helix Fire Department. Those are the three entities, is that correct, Chief?
That is correct.
Okay. And so that would go to the voters for, is it $1 per S-1000?
That's correct.
What else do we need to do on this, Doug?
Basically, this is to conduct a public hearing on the consideration, and the next step, if you do approve it, would be refer to the vote in May for the formation of the new district, dissolution of the two other districts, and then the election of the Board for the new district.
Okay. Did you hear all that, Dave?
I, I, I heard his voice. That was it.
Okay, so I'm just going to say, yes, you heard that, because what he said is correct? So, basically, what he said is it's going to dissolve the two other districts, create one district at a new tax rate, and it's going to also put the directors on the board on the ballot as well.
That is correct.
Yes, sir, that sounds perfect. That sounds perfect.
Okay. Anything you want to add to that, Dave?
Am I allowed to speak educatively or advocately? Or should I only speak educatively? Or just, just tell me what I can say, John, because I'm not exactly sure of what I'm allowed to say.
He's currently in his official position, so only educationally.
Only educationally.
Uh, I, I see advantages for the department inasmuch as being able to train and provide better public service to the citizens of the, the area that, I don't know the exact spec, of, of the three different plant protection agencies. And I, I see added level of, like I said, training, and then also specifically, safety for the responders. That's a fact. It's based on the numbers, and then based on our record of on-the-job entries over the last couple of years, it's zero. And I, I, I think that this would be a, a good move, but either way, as long as something provides, uh, public safety and service to the public inasmuch as emergency services, I'm, I'm always going to be an advocate for that. So if, if I'm allowed to say that.
Okay, well, whether you're allowed to say it or not, you just did, so.
Sorry about that. If I, if I stepped out of line, I, that was a mistake.
I, I know where your heart is, so. Okay, so any questions from the commissioners?
No.
I have none.
I have none as well. I have none from you either. Can we come out of public hearing mode now?
You might want to ask and see if anyone else.
Oh, anybody in the audience want to speak either for or against this formation of the district? Hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and come out of public hearing mode and go back into public session.
Can you run back down to the number at the top? I move the adoption of order number BCC 2020-019.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. And just to confirm for the chief on the phone, this is to refer this to the ballot for the voters. And a motion's been made and seconded. So, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Chief, this will be on the ballot.
I thank you all very much, and for, for the safety and whatnot, and the services we can deliver, I certainly do thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'm going to go ahead and hang up the phone now.
Thanks, sir. Have a good day.
You, too. Okay, so that's done. Number two, tax account reserve. Did, is, is that?
Yeah, I didn't know if Rachel wanted to talk about that, or.
Surprise.
Rachel Reynolds, Deputy Director of Assessment and Taxation. And so this is a tax reserve account for, I believe it was CenturyLink, to set aside monies as waiting to see what the magistrate decisions are.
Well, that was succinct. I think we'll have you all the time.
You get simple when you put me on the spot.
So Rachel, what they've done is they've paid their taxes, but it's in dispute, so it may end up that we end up having to pay some of that tax back to them.
With interest.
Yes. That's the purpose of this reserve.
Yes, it is.
So is that to build up a reserve in case this, we end up having to pay?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're building this reserve up and holding it so that we're not hit with a huge interest bill and refunding of tax money. Because this has been going on, I believe, seven years, eight years. So it's been going on a while.
Is interest calculated at market rate?
No. Interest is calculated at 1% per month.
So does it go retro back for the seven, eight years, whatever it was?
It does.
So it does, okay.
And it's capped at $900,000. Do I read that order correctly?
That is correct. At the present time there, the amount that is not disputed is about 37% of what's on the, the tax roll. So that gives you an idea of what the potential refund might be.
Sounds pretty prudent to do this.
I know. If you're doing 1% a month, I have some. Give you two.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of order TX 2020-02.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For closed property auction.
This is coming before the board to establish the annual auction for tax foreclosed properties. There are currently eight properties that were actually deeded to the property, to the county this year because of delinquent property taxes. And in addition to that, we have one property left over from last year that we're still trying to sell. And then there are several properties from previous years that will also be going into this auction, which would be including the Byers Avenue property, all of the property in Milton Free Water. There, there are three tax lots on that one. And then the Weston House that you previously have received complaints on.
Ah. I move we adopt order TX 2020-01 with enthusiasm.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The next two items are referrals from the finance department due to the dollar amounts. The first one is, both of these are related to the flood and rock material that the road department had to purchase to address primarily Bingham Road and Caillou's Road. The first one is to Pioneer Ready Mix for $10,033.84.
You have to do these separately, correct? Okay.
Move approval payment to Pendleton Ready Mix in the amount of $10,033.84.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion, a second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And the next one is a payment to Rod Anderson Construction. This is for riprap for also the same type of repair. And it's for $11,457.54.
Move for approval. Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the aware grant committee. So, I can do this one, considering I'm on the committee. So with the untimely passing of the mayor of Weston, Jennifer McClure Spurgeon, we have an opening for the city of Weston for the aware grant committee. The committee seeks board of commissioner approval to appoint interim mayor, I think he's now the mayor, Dwayne Thule, to serve on the committee as the representative for the city of Weston for the interim. There's also a member of the other committee members, a number of the other members whose terms have expired and whose reappointment is recommended. The aware committee plans to meet the evening tonight to review the applications.
So Mr. Chair, I move approval of order BCC 2020-018.
Second.
All favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Yes.
Okay.
It's the Marie show.
It's the Marie show for supplemental budgets, and we're going to go into public hearing mode. And is, is Rachel still on the docket for something coming up?
We don't want to overlook you.
Well, I just, this is the part where usually the room clears. No offense to Marie, but it's usually Robert that clears the room, so.
You don't have to.
You absolutely don't have to.
You listen to every drop of it.
No need to be courteous.
Good morning. Marie Simonis, Assistant Director of Budget and Finance. I have before you this morning 10 supplemental budgets and one budget transfer. They are budget order number 2020-20, General Fund Courthouse Facility. The courthouse facility program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers of $375,000 and an increase in capital outlay of $375,000. Budget order number 2020-21, General Fund Jail Facility. The jail facility program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of $10,000 and an increase in capital outlay of $10,000. Budget order 2020-22, General Fund Surveyor. The surveyor program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of $17,000, an increase in personnel services of $6,000, and an increase in materials and services of $11,000. Budget order number 2020-23, Special Transportation Fund, STF. The STF program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in beginning cash balance of $55,000, an increase in local revenue of $140,000, an increase in materials and services of $138,100, and a decrease in contingency of $53,100. Budget order number 2020-24, Community Justice Fund, Treatment Court Program. The Treatment Court Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of $1100, an increase of state revenue of $90,000, and an increase in materials and services of $91,100. Budget order number 2020-25, Economic Development Fund, Economic Development. The economic development program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of $150,000 and an increase in materials and services of $150,000. Budget order number 2020-26, Community Benefit Plan Fund, Wind Farm Distribution. The Wind Farm Distribution program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of $150,000 and a decrease of $150,000 in contingency. Budget order number 2020-27, Facility Improvement Fund, Facility Reserve Program. The facilities reserve program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of $385,000 and a decrease in contingency of $385,000. Budget order number 2020-29, Human Services Fund, School-Based Mental Health Program. The school-based mental health program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning fund balance of $33,000, an increase in materials and services of $31,000, and an increase in contingency of $2,000. Budget order number 2020-30, Public Works Fund, Public Works Program. The Public Works Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $300,000, an increase in capital outlay of $150,000, and a decrease in contingency of $450,000. The next is the appropriations transfer. Budget order number 2020-28, Fleet Management Fund. The fleet management program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $16,000 and a decrease in capital outlay of $16,000. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, can you do this every time, instead of Robert?
Every time.
Elegantly stated.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
None, I, I, none for the hearing. We can deliberate, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Anybody from the public want to talk about, discuss what we just heard? Okay. We'll come out of hearing mode and go into regular session again.
Are we ready? Mr. Chair, move approval of budget order 2020-20.
Second.
All favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I'm deferring to you, Commissioner Alphing.
I'm so eloquent, too.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you used to announce the two ways.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of budget order 2020-21.
Second.
All favor say aye.
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 Move approval of budget order 2020-22.
Second.
All favor say aye.
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 Move approval of budget order 2020-23.
Second.
All favor say aye.
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 Move approval of budget order 2020-24.
All favor say aye. Whoop, wait a minute.
Second. I'm multitasking. Second.
Not very well.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Move approval of budget order 2020-25.
Second.
All favor say aye.
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 Move approval of budget order 2020-26.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Move approval of budget order 2020-27.
Second.
All favor say aye.
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 Move approval of budget order 2020-29.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Move approval of budget order 2020-30.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
And that's it.
And then there's the supplemental, uh, budget transfer as well.
Is that 28,000?
28.
Okay.
Move approval of budget, budget transfer order 2020-28.
Second.
All favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that it?
Before you, no, before you adjourn.
Oh, no, no, I wasn't going to adjourn yet. I was just making sure that was it on all the budget stuff. Okay, so we talked about the office, goes, okay, Commissioner reports.
Before, back, before we leave that, is it necessary for us to authorize Commissioner Schaefer, who's in charge of security, to perhaps initiate some emergency expenses related to that?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
We should.
You can, yes.
I, I would so move.
I would second.
Okay, all in favor, is there like a, do we need to put a limit on that, or?
Apparently not.
Do we want to?
No.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And then there's one other.
Expenditures.
Apparently.
There's one other potential action, I know if you want to take it.
Oh, great.
It's regarding Airport Road. As has the plan all along, there, the road department had planned to include a portion of their bicycle pedestrian path funds towards that project. And what the estimate at this point to make that path along Airport Road will be $96,050. And so the department is requesting that the board approve that amount of money to be spent from the bicycle pedestrian path fund towards the Airport Road project.
So I talked with Tom about that this morning, and what that would do is allow us to, I say us, the road department, to pave Otter Road north towards the airport boundary line, which would be the southern end of the airport boundary line. So basically, we're talking, and it would be a clean break right here at this entrance into Eotech on this side, so.
North entrance.
The north entrance of Eotech, right here. So here's Airport Road.
Is that where the leftover money?
Yeah, and it would come up to.
That was the original plan, I think.
There. So that's where that would be paved to.
Yeah, I think isn't, it, wasn't that the original intent?
I don't know if that was the original plan, but this is what, what Tom is proposing.
Or as, as it, as it has evolved, that's become the.
The original plan was to do as much as they could with the funding that was available. And due to the estimated cost at this time, there was going to be some funds left over that could be utilized on Otter Road.
But I think that was.
That was the hope.
Be optimistic. That will happen.
The, uh, the time factor is contractors would want to be able to have this information as soon as possible for their playing purposes. So Tom was hopeful that we could get in front of the board today, so.
And I'll go ahead and draft up an order if that's what, if it is approved.
So how, how's this moved so far, as far as the construction? So, how's this moved so far, as far as the construction?
It has hit the usual snag, but the consultant is working to smooth it out, to try to get everything back in line. So, it may delay things. The contractor is available, and hopefully start it as soon as we can get it going.
So, is there a motion to approve this?
I move approval.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I have one more aye.
Okay, that motion carries.